Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Board of Education Meeting. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Good evening, Dr. Gilbert.
Good evening. I am thrilled tonight to introduce you to a group of young people that I think really are amazing. I heard them last week and I told Ms. Trail, I said, "Ms. Trail, if there's any way that we can get them to come to the school board meeting, I'd like for our school board members and for the public to hear them." And so this is the Bradley Choir. As you know, Dr. Kim Fowler is the principal at Bradley and she's with us tonight. And this is Ms. Karen Blooding, who is the music teacher there. And so we welcome the Bradley Choir.
Way in the water, way in the water, children. Way in the water, God's gonna shovel the water. See that bank dog dressed in white? God's gonna shovel the water. The leader looks like an angel light? God's gonna shovel the water. Way in the water, way in the water, children. Way in the water, God's gonna shovel the water. See that bank dog dressed in red? God's gonna shovel the water. It must be the bird that blows his leg? God's gonna shovel the water. Way in the water, way in the water, children. Way in the water, God's gonna shovel the water. God's gonna shovel the water.
It's always hard for me not to say something. I know you really want to hear them sing a couple more, so I'll just say a couple things. They've been the most amazing group to work with. My first year with this group at Bradley, and they have just taught me maybe more than I have taught them. Wonderful, energetic, talented, talented kids. We've just had a blast. And I really appreciate the wonderful opportunity I've had to work with them and with this wonderful school district. We have two more pieces we'd like to sing. They're not in English. We're doing multicultural songs, as you can probably tell. And the last two, first one's in Arabic, and it is a blessing, a blessing for all good things and peace. And then the final one is a mixture of languages from all over the world called Sahita, and Sahita means unity. And you'll see them clapping and pointing up and doing lots of great rhythmic stuff with that. So thank you for the opportunity to sing for you all tonight and for the special work that you do for our kids and for the staff here in Murfreesboro. All right. We have some sixth graders and a fifth grader who are doing the call and response, the leader part of our final song. Thank you to Iowa and Simone and Crystal and Ethan. I'm sorry, my fault, guys. I think I started in the wrong key. We're here without our regular stuff. I sure did. Boy, we'd be up in the heavens in a minute. This is gonna feel better.
Unida, unida, peace and joy, peace and joy. Shalom, 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 shalom. Ah, ah, we tan kita, 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 ah, ah, we tan kita.
I want to thank you all. You all were awesome. Listening to you, it's just hard to believe you're an elementary school choir because you are so impressive. I want to clap and point up and go "Eta" to you all. Terrific job. You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
His hands are gonna be tapped. You know, this is why we have to keep arts in school.
How many mayors have more fun than kids?
Just think of the music programs that can.
Dr. Gilbert, this is certainly a wonderful way to get our meeting started. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll ask for Mayor Tommy Bragg to come forth to administer the oath of office to our re-elected members and our newly-elected members. And we'll also ask the family members of the newly-elected and the re-elected to come forward, come up from this area, you can use that ramp, come up and be a part of the swearing-in. You can come at this time.
All right. New school board members, raise your right hand. I do solemnly affirm that I will support the Constitution of the State of Tennessee and of the United States and the acts constituting the Charter of the City of Murfreesboro and that I will faithfully zealously and impartially discharge the duties of a member of the Board of Education of the City of Murfreesboro without fear or favor and for the public welfare. Congratulations, you are duly sworn. Congratulations, family members. Be sure and support them, they're gonna need a lot. Thank you, Madam Chair.
We'd now like to have a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye. Thank you. Dr. Gilbert, communications?
We do have several communications tonight. I'd like to congratulate first of all and wish this wishes to the retiring employees who were honored by the Board at the Doubletree on May the 17th. It certainly was a special evening and thank you all for being there. We also need to make an announcement that future school board meetings will be held on the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month, and they will start at 6 o'clock, beginning in June instead of 6:30, so the public can make note of that also. And we did have a couple of BEP mini-grant recipients. They are Julie Castor at Bellwood, and the title of her mini-grant was Little Leaf Sprout Cooperative. And Debbie Hickerson of Kason Lane, who had two. The first was Who Doesn't Like Algebra and Who Needs Dirt? And I don't want to answer either one of those questions. Mitchell Nelson would like to thank the following for their donations for their trip to land between the lakes. Together, these folks raised over $900 for the students who might not otherwise have been able to attend. And those contributors are Advantage Mini Storage, Gas World, Air Renovation, Haynes Brother Lumber, Avery Smith, Carl and Suzanne Uvanks, Scott and Gail Porterfield, Sleep Centers of Middleton C., and James and Barbara Jean. And we'd also like to congratulate some students from Scales. They were published, authors recently, in the Young Writers of America 2012, and of thousands of entries that were reviewed, less than 20% were selected, and these were selected. From Ms. Ortiz's fourth grade class, Faith Godwin; from Ms. Fulmer's fifth grade class, Trey Berry, Allison Dial, Taylor Duncan, Tamara Johnson, Hope Sledge, Andrew Thomas; from Ms. Womack's fifth grade class, Bailey Eschman, Nick Gardner, Madison Hodges, Claire Mincy, Meredith Neal, and Noah Thomas. And then recently, we had the Science Olympiad, this is the Elementary Science Olympiad. Dr. Pat Patterson and Amy Phelps have certainly been instrumental in that. They are from MTSU, from the Chemistry Department. And we had students from Mitchell, from various Murfreesboro City schools participating. And we have had that since the beginning of this, which I think this is its fifth year. But this year, I think it was significant because they gave placements for the top 10 places. And of our schools who were participating, every school that we had in Murfreesboro City placed within the top 10. And those schools in order are Discovery received first place, Black Fox was second, we had Kason Lane that came in fifth, Northfield sixth, we had ninth place John Pittard and Bradley. So we really appreciate the work of our teachers. Most of this occurred after school as far as preparation for the Science Olympiad, and really it's quite an experience. And so I encourage our parents to attend the award ceremony that's held each year. And we also thank John Pittard for hosting that. And John Pittard has hosted that Science Olympiad since its inception. Northfield Elementary celebrated its 25th year with a time capsule dig, and that actually happened today. And I think it was probably broadcast over local television stations, and some of you were there, so thank you very much. And my understanding is it was quite a celebratory time that there are actually some teachers who were there when Northfield first became a school. And we have one, actually, a school board member who was there long years ago. And so I really appreciate the teachers who did come today and others who came today for the time capsule dig. We'd like to congratulate Rebecca Few. As you know, we are moving to Common Core standards in the State of Tennessee along with several other states. And Rebecca is one of our two representatives on the Common Core training. And she actually is going to be in Washington, D.C., May the 23rd through the 25th. She has been invited to go there for the Achieve Networks Educators Evaluating Quality Instructional Products, and that's really a quip. But what they will be doing is they will be looking at current instruction, current materials, and evaluating how well it's going to align with Common Core. So it's quite an honor for Rebecca Few to be representing not only Murfreesboro City but Tennessee there. We will be holding a reading center ribbon cutting at Mitchell Nelson on Thursday, the 24th, which is this Thursday at 3:30. This reading center is going to play a very vital role in what we're doing here in Murfreesboro City. And so we thank the Jennings and Rebecca Jones Foundation for their contribution to the center, and we will be holding a ribbon cutting on Thursday at 3:30. And then we'd also like to thank the City Council. They have been most gracious to us during the budget hearings, didn't ask a lot of questions, and that was a good thing for us. But we do want to acknowledge that they have approved us to receive a Community Development Block Grant. It's a public service grant. It is in the amount of $12,000, and it will be supporting our Franklin Heights Learning Center. And those are your communications.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. We're now down to consent items. If there are no questions, we'll ask for a motion for the approval of consent items. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye. Okay, under action items, number A, Ms. Baker.
Okay, your first action item is election of a new vice chair. According to Board Policy BO3, and according to the state statute Tennessee Code Annotated Section 49-2-202(c)(2) and Section 25-6 of the Murfreesboro City Code, board officers are to be elected annually. The state statute mandates that the Board only elect a board chair. However, the Board Policy BO3 mandates that the Board elect a board chair and a vice chair. And due to the fact that Ms. Nancy Duggan, the former board vice chair, is no longer on the school board, we need to hold elections for a new vice chair. The term for this position would be through October 31st, 2012, the end of Ms. Duggan's original vice chair term. Nominations for board vice chair will be given, followed by a roll call for votes. A majority of the entire board, not just those board members present, that means four votes, is necessary for one to be voted into office of vice chair. And board officers cannot be elected by acclamation. After the nominations have been made and seconded, Ms. Ridley will call your name and should state the name of the nominee you are voting, and you should state the name of the nominee you are voting for. Please remember, it takes four votes for a member to be elected. Now we will call for nominations for vice chair. Ms. Rainier?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Butch Campbell. I think that this position should be someone who has some tenure on the Board, and we know he's been with us here for the last four years. He was just recently re-elected. Mr. Campbell has the expertise of having been an administrator, a principal for many years, so he has the background in education. And he knows Robert's Rules of Order, so he could handle a meeting, and I think that would be effective.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I will close the floor for nominations. And Ms. Ridley, if you could take a roll call vote for the vice chair by going through each member and them naming who they're voting for.
Butch Campbell.
Mr. Campbell.
Butch Campbell.
Butch Campbell.
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Campbell.
Okay, seeing that Mr. Campbell has received all of the votes, Mr. Campbell, congratulations, you are now the vice chair.
Thank you. I appreciate the confidence given to me by members of the Board, and under the leadership of Ms. Wade, we will continue to move forward.
Congratulations, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
All righty. Dr. Gilbert, back to you for action items.
Yes, your action items are the approval of board policies, and I'm going to turn to Ms. Baker for that.
Okay, the first board policy that you have before you tonight is Board Policy PER22, dealing with personnel records. And this policy is before you for first reading. This policy has been revised to specify the records that are required upon employment. That is in the first section of the policy. The next section deals with the records that must be maintained in the personnel file. You'll note that item four, under Guidelines for Maintaining the Personnel File, it includes what records must be made available to the public under the Tennessee Open Records Law and what records must be redacted, what information must be redacted under the Tennessee Open Records Law. If you have any questions or comments on this policy, I'll be glad to entertain them. Okay, seeing no questions, we're ready to see if you're ready for this policy to move forward on first reading.
We're now entertaining a motion. That's motion is a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, board members? Aye. Thank you.
Okay, the next board policy that you have before you tonight for first reading is Board Policy STU18, Child Abuse and/or Neglect. This policy has been greatly revised from the policy that is currently on the books. The reasons for the detail in this policy stem from the fact that it is tied directly to state law and requirements that are imposed on each and every employee of the school system, whether it be a teacher, a cafeteria worker, a bus driver. All employees are obligated to follow and abide by this law. And I thought it was beneficial to the employees that they were fully aware of exactly what the state law requires of them. So that is why you see the detail that you will see in this policy. I may make a couple of revisions to make it read easier, just by putting in, breaking up these long paragraphs with some section titles at the top of them to make it flow easier. But that would be the only change I would bring back to you on second reading. Do you have any questions or comments on this policy?
Maybe three things. I was reading it, and lines 20 through 23 that defines abuse, I thought maybe we can move that up to right under line one, just because people reading it will know what constitute abuse. And also, let's see, there was nothing in lines 14 through 18 about... And also, let's see, there was nothing in lines 14 through 18 about contacting Director of Schools. I don't know if I just missed that or maybe you can answer that?
Typically, the way that this would work is first and foremost, you have to contact the, of course, Department of Children's Services. And then, the Director has delegated this responsibility to the Coordinator of Social Services for the school system. And if you want, there could be something added that the Coordinator shall inform the Director.
It might be helpful, you know, just helpful for people to know that.
There will be an administrative director that will follow this, that will take care of a lot of the specific procedures. But I think the primarily, the probably most important part of this is the understanding that whoever has firsthand knowledge has to make that call to these CS. And I share this with the Board at the work session, but I will share it with the public. We have been in contact with the Sipit Team, it's called Sipit Team, which works with the Child Advocacy Center. And we are planning to have pretty extensive training this fall for all of our employees. I think that's really important.
Ms. Renear? Ms. Baker, I just want to thank you for clarifying this policy. In years past in my former life, when I was teaching, we have gone through many revisions of this policy. In some cases, we were to notify Children's Services. In other cases, we were to notify our Administrator. Then, again, that would be passed on to the Superintendent or Director of Schools. So, I really like that this has clarified that, yes, it is your responsibility, as it is for anyone in the public, if you know of something that's amiss, that a child is being abused or harmed in any way, you're responsible for reporting. And I think this is perfectly spelled out. I think you did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Renear. Mr. Campbell?
Ms. Renear, are you saying reporting to Department of Children's Services? Okay.
We're ready for a motion.
Sumoed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Thank you.
Okay. Now, the next policy being brought to the Board tonight for first reading is Board Policy STU43, Use of Personal Communication Devices in Schools. This policy is designed to help regulate students bringing in personal communication devices and electronic devices. Personal communication devices is defined in the policy to include cell phones, iPods, iPads, et cetera. And those would be devices that emit an audible signal, vibrates, displays a message or otherwise summons or delivers a communication to the possessor of the device. A personal electronic device, it would encompass cameras, recorders, or a player, or any such item that electronically transmits or receives a signal, image, sound file, or data file or message. Under this policy, the personal communication devices and personal electronic devices may be stored in backpacks, purses, personal carryalls. However, the use of the device is forbidden during the academic day, on a school-sponsored trip, or during the extended school program unless it has been approved by the Principal or the Principal's designee, or if it's during the extended school program by the ESP Site Director or their designee. And a student that violates this policy would be subject to having the device taken up from them. The device would be held in a secure location by the Principal or the ESP Site Director and would be returned to the parent of the child. And this also includes that cell phones and other personal communication devices are not to be used, accessed or displayed while on a school bus as well. So, this is a revision to the policy to clarify the rules on bringing those items to school. It isn't, there will be times when the Principal or the ESP Site Director can allow the use of them, such as on reward days, or if a child needs to use it to call their parent if they forgot their lunch money or they're sick. But otherwise, they should not be used during the school day. Do you have any questions on this policy?
Mr. Campbell?
Ms. Baker, where does it spell that out? When the student can use the device?
That would be spelled, when they can use it, it's at the Principal's discretion there. If you look in line 28 through 30, where it says that the use of the devices is forbidden during academic day, school-sponsored trips, or during ESP unless approved by the Principal or Principal's designee, or ESP Site Director, or ESP Site Director's designee.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Baker? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Sumoed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, Board, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next policy before the Board, and this policy is before the Board for final reading, due to the fact that it needs to be placed in the Student Handbook that will be published shortly to be handed out as children register for school and return to school. This would be the Student, Board Policy STU23, the Code of Acceptable Behavior and Discipline. And under state law, we are required to include this policy in the Parent-Student Handbook that is given to all students that attend our schools. This has had some minor changes to it from the original policy. You'll see the changes are outlined in bold in this policy.
Are there any questions for Ms. Baker? Hearing none. Ms. Ridley, since this is our last time to hear this, if you would please call the roll for our new Board Members.
Ms. Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Bryan?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Renear?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Ridley.
And now, the next, the next policy brought before the Board tonight for final reading is Board Policy STU23, Discipline Procedures. And this policy works hand-in-hand with the Code of Acceptable Behavior and Discipline. This policy sets out the various levels of misconduct and what the discipline procedures and consequences are for each level of misconduct. Again, this policy is being brought to you tonight for final reading due to the fact that it does need to be included in our Student, Parent-Student Handbook. And it is required to be included in there under state law as well. And the changes that were made to this policy, you'll find in bold as well. It's had some minor revisions to it.
Ms. Barrett?
Just a quick thing, line 132, it's got "write" twice. I just want to make sure we don't put "write" twice.
Okay, I'll correct that. And also, Ms. Renear had caught a change that needed to be made in line 134. It will read, the student may appeal a change in school assignment to the Board. And that ability to appeal such a disciplinary reassignment is, actually stems from the discipline policy and also there is another state statute that deals with students appealing assignment to the Board. And I'll footnote that policy as well.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Ms. Phillips?
On line 32, where it talks about maintain a written record of the offense and the disciplinary action, where will that record be maintained and when will it be expunged from the student's record? Will it follow that student to middle school?
I believe that the disciplinary records are to be maintained in their educational records file and they are not removed, it's my understanding. They're not supposed to be removed.
At any time?
And I'll defer to Dr. Gilbert.
I think that with the records, I think you would find that depending upon the severity of the offense, then you're going to have it follow that child.
I think if it's an in-or-out-of-school suspension or an expulsion, those are the disciplinary actions that have to be documented and maintained in a student's educational file. If it's something that falls under a non-statutory type of discipline, a verbal reprimand, a counseling, some sort of discipline of that nature, there's not a statutory requirement that it be maintained in their educational file.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Phillips?
I just want to make sure that if it's not consequential in any way, then it not follow that child into middle school.
Ms. Renear?
I believe in answer to Ms. Phillips, I think that perhaps the misbehavior level one are things that are handled in the classroom, more than likely. And the teacher is the one who keeps a record of that, maintains that record, unless this is beyond that. I think that when we get into another level of discipline or disruption, that goes into level two or so on and so forth, where the Principal keeps a record, the Office maintains a record, and then goes into the more severe consequences. But I did want to make a comment that I really like the way that, Ms. Baker, you have referenced the Board Policies for these different types of infractions. For instance, lines 32 and 33, excuse me, 22 and 23, harassment and violation of blah, 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 and you relate it back to the Board Policy, bullying related back to the Board Policy. And I really like the way that you have included any of these behaviors that are committed on the school bus, because they are still our children on that school bus. So, I think that's real important.
Yeah, Ms. Phillips?
I was just going to follow up, on line 85, it does talk about when the Principal shall maintain a written record. And I just wanted to, that's what I was trying to clarify, the difference between the written record on line 32 and the written record on line 85. And will the written record in line 32 follow the child in an educational record?
I think that if you look at misbehavior level one, there is a category for in-school suspension. I think if it did, if it did rise to the level of in-school suspension, that would be something that probably would remain documented. I believe in-school and out-of-school, I can double-check that for you, but I thought that in-school and out-of-school suspension and expulsion had to be documented.
Well, tardiness is not, I mean, it's not an ideal situation to happen, but, and I know that occasionally, children are put in in-school suspension because of excessive tardiness. Is that not true?
I'm not aware of that. And the reason I say that, and it may be happening, but I know that it's been very difficult for Principals to decide if there would be any kind of repercussions for tardiness because they really feel this is the parent's responsibility. And so, and even previously when I was here, we really never reached a conclusion about what is tardy. And so, it pretty much is up to the Principal's discretion. I will tell you that I have been in communication with Judge Donna Scott-Davenport, and she has been very pleased with us this year as far as what we've done with the tardies, with the absences. And I think really that has to do with Crystal Ferris being the designated person for handling those, because that allows us to intervene with children whenever they do move and to be aware of what's happening at home. And she works very closely with Tanya Hobbs, with the Social Services, and that seems to have helped a tremendous amount this year as far as unexcused absences and tardiness. So, I think as far as tardiness, our Principals have been very lenient because they do feel it's the responsibility of the Parents. And so, what you will have happening there frequently is instead of there being any kind of repercussions on the child, you'll have the Social Service Department called and they will see if they can help in any way with taking care of, making sure the students are there on time.
So, the children are not being put in?
I'm not aware of it. I will certainly check on that, though.
Okay, great.
And where it says classroom tardiness, that may be the child that dawdles in the hall and doesn't get to class in time when they're going in-between classes. That may be what, the type of discipline that they would get, this minor level discipline for the child that takes their time and wanders around instead of going straight to class in the time they've got in-between classes. With the way that it's worded, classroom tardiness, that may be what the intent was.
And I think with all of these, you'll see there's quite a span of disciplinary options that are available there. And in some of these, you'll find that some of the behaviors may, you may find them at level one and level two depending upon what we're seeing as far as the recurring and the habitual kinds of instances. So, I think that with a lot of the disciplinary options, you're going to see the minimal option taken, especially if it's the first time, second time, and usually that's going to correct it. Now, if it doesn't, then there's leeway here for the Principal to take additional action. But I think that the way the policy is written, I think it gives quite a few options to our Administration for handling discipline. And I appreciate that very much.
Mr. Campbell?
I'm not real sure, Ms. Phillips, how it's done in other places, but I think we have to remember sometimes we may have a student who is enrolled in one senior school and then may transfer to another. And certainly, if that child has been a discipline problem in school A, those people in school B want to know about it. And therefore, some of those records, some of those events, some of those occurrences may be transferred along with their record. As it would be even going from, excuse me, our schools to any of the county middle schools. If the child is a constant behavior problem and discipline problem, certainly those people at that school that's going to be receiving that child would like to know about it so that at least they can have a heads up and get ready. So, sometimes it'll follow.
Yeah, that's why I was saying consequential. Anything that was not consequential, I did not want to follow the child.
Are there any more questions for Ms. Baker on this policy? Hearing none, we'll ask for a motion and a second. Take a vote.
Moves are approved.
Second. There's a motion, second. Board Members, all in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I am bringing before you on action item D. You will remember that tenure is kind of in limbo right now. We are in the middle of going through the new process. But we can grant tenure to those teachers who have been in our system before, have taken a leave and returned back to us. And that is the case with Jennifer Harris. She's a teacher at Mitchell Nelson. She had been previously with the system. She's a very high-level teacher and we are asking for your approval for tenure for her.
Any questions, Board Members, for Dr. Gilbert? Before we ask for a motion to approve this?
You said she was with us and then left and came back? Where did she go when she left?
I don't guess it really matters.
She was a mommy at home.
Thank you. I talked with her at Black Fox.
She taught at Black Fox.
She was good, too.
I'm sure she was. I'm not franking that.
We were very glad to get her back. I'm very glad to get her back. So, I'm asking for your approval for that. Thank you.
And have we approved?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, Ms. Ridley, if you'll call the roll?
Ms. Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Bryan?
Yes.
Ms. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips? Aye.
Ms. Renear?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Under reports and information, you have a discussion regarding the schedule of special or policy, Board Policy Review Meetings, Ms. Wade, and I will turn that over to you.
At this time, Board Members, if there's, there needs to be some discussion. It was brought up at our last policy session that we would meet every other month for our Board Policy Reviews. And that way, would just give us a chance to review the policies a little bit more, maybe do a few more of them at one time. Give you a chance to look over them if there's no change. Ms. Baker has asked in the past, if you review some of the policies, you're welcome to send that list or send that to her if there are no changes. That really helps us get through these policies. Because some of them, we only touch and there's no change. So, we're asking for discussion tonight on your feelings on making our study sessions every other month on the second Tuesday. Mr. Campbell?
Well, as I said during the work session and as Ms. Baker- Well, as I said during the work session and as Ms. Baker verified, we've still got several policies to go through. And I really believe that we are still on a little bit of a timeframe to get those done. I'd like to see us continue to meet every month until we get those completed and whether or not we're, of course, we're going to start meeting at six instead of six-thirty. If we want to meet till eight-thirty, you know, I really think that we need to push forward to get the policies completed and get that procedure done like we need to do.
Ms. Renee?
Well, having just, you know, we had Mr. Thompson at our retreat, and he talked about us as the board needing to have a vision. And then I recently attended my TSBA orientation, and also they talked about the board setting, having a vision, setting long-range goals and planning. And I think that it would be effective to have meetings as we've been having in order to do that. But I agree, I counted the number of policies. We still have seventy-three more policies. And at the TSBA meeting, they said we should be doing these yearly. So I know we're behind, and, and I know some of them are way back, and I think I looked at some that were ninety-six and ninety-seven, so we do have a ways to go on the policies.
I think maybe TSBA may have misquoted on that yearly. Some of them we will, due to the law, have to revisit, and Ms. Baker guessed those that we revisit every year because of maybe a law change or a bill or something. But there's a two-year on those policies, you revisit them every two years. But you visit them as we need to. I mean, you're not strung out there not being able to do it. Are there any more comments about the?
Got a comment?
Uh huh. Mrs. Phillips?
Um, I can see going ahead and continuing our schedule until we get through the, the bulk of the policies. But I do think that there is a sound argument for meeting every other month after that. As far as the visioning session, I'm agreed. In fact, that's why I brought that up, because I believe we, as a, as a new board, we need a new, fresh vision for our system that incorporates and, and shows respect for the elements of our vision that, that was before. But I would love to see us do that in a retreat, and in the past, I think they've gotten perhaps someone, a professional, to help us come in and work as a team to, someone who's very good at facilitating visioning sessions, to come in and work with us as a team, as a team during a retreat. And I think that's very, very effective, and I'd love to be a part of that rather than, and then we could do it as a whole piece rather than doing two hours here, two hours there, two hours somewhere else. But I do think it's important. I'd love to see us be able to go down to every other month and give Ms. Baker more time. She's, you know, she's a very busy lady to, to work with us and, and give us more time to review after we have finished the bulk of the policies that we have to review at this time.
If there are no more comments, then we'll entertain a motion. Someone have a motion?
I'll make the motion that we continue as we are until we get through the bulk of the policies, and then after that, we can come back and look at whether we want to meet work session every month or every other month.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Questions? Mrs. Ridley, if you'll call the roll?
Barrett?
Yes.
Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Renee?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert. Mr. Anderson, I'm going to turn the rest over to you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Gilbert. The next item is, is the report on the finances. We have at this point a little over four million dollars as net income, which basically is our cash flow up to this part of the year. We're at eighty-three point three percent of our fiscal year. Last year at this time, we were at three million, seven hundred and sixty-seven million, so we are ahead of last year at this time in that area. On revenues, we have really good news on sales tax collections. We're up four hundred and ten thousand dollars over last year at this point, which is absolutely wonderful. And property tax, we're up roughly two hundred and twelve thousand. We're also up on the basic education program, which is BEP, because of our growth that we have received year-to-date, and I'll, I'll explain the growth when I get to the next report. On our expenditure side, oh, I'm sorry, on, on the bottom of that, we're at eighty-nine point three percent of our revenue, and again, our year is at eighty-three point three, so we're ahead of, ahead of target there. And we're about a half percent better overall than we were last year at this point based on budgetary numbers. In our revenue, I mean, on expenditure side, we're at eighty point nine percent of our expenditure, again, at eighty-three point three, so that is also a, a good point to be. Last year at this time, we were at eighty-one point four, so we are about five, a half percent ahead there. We were half a percent ahead on the revenue, so one whole percent on a fifty-plus million-dollar budget's a lot of money. So we feel pretty good about our, our revenues coming in now and about our expenditures remaining under control. So does anyone have any questions on our financial package so far? Okay, the next piece is the enrollment piece. We are two hundred and thirteen students over last year at this time, and that is the growth part that I was talking to you about. Now, growth money from the state does lag behind. We get two installments, one in January and one in May, so we're expecting another payment here very soon. But that's, that's an excellent number to be over, and we're a hundred and sixty-five over what we had budgeted originally. So again, that is another excellent number. Our growth has been very good, and thanks to the economy of, of the city, it's done very well, that people are, are coming, moving back into the city, and which we're real, real glad that they are. Our PTR ratio for K through three is at eighteen point nine-two. We have been able to continue to keep that below the twenty. And our four-through-six ratio is twenty point seven-two to one, which also is an excellent number when the state's number is, is twenty-five. So we're very proud to be able to keep it at that number as well. Our attendance ratio is ninety-six percent for the month, which again is very high. We're very proud of that as well. Special ed over the year has grown in, in the pre-K about ten students from the beginning, and we always watch that number because that's obviously an indicator for what we're going to have when they move up into our K-through-six configuration. But it's grown ten, so we feel pretty good about that. It's actually ten less than last year. Last year we had seventy-five by the end, so we're, we're feeling okay there. Our average district-wide PTR is at nineteen point five-eight, so district-wide, we're still under the twenty-to-one benchmark that we had tried to shoot for. So does anyone have any questions on our attendance report for the month?
Mrs. Phillips?
It actually has something to do with attendance, but how, how do we read on sixth grade for next year?
We're getting those reports. The schools are getting them now. It looks like we may have one or two schools that may actually grow a sixth grade, and we're waiting to see what their final numbers. A lot of times, the intent to return is one thing, the actual when they show up is another. So we try not to overreact. Our past history has been that the number for sixth grade is always less than what they say their intent is. So we are watching it. But it looks, two schools look like they may actually grow in a, in the sixth grade class.
Ms. Phillips?
Oh, I think mine was a different topic. I was just going to say, many times when a new school opens, there's that initial flight to the new school, the middle school, then after that, things seem to settle back down and our sixth grade stable up. So I just wanted to throw that in. But mine was a financial question. I remember at our study session, we asked Dr. Gilbert after the budget was presented, and we know it's just recently been presented, if you could give us some sort of plan for funding the technology we are so desperately going to need in an upcoming two thousand and thirteen.
And I can talk to you a little bit about that, just without a formal plan, but I can, I can talk to you a little bit about that. I think there are a couple of things. One is that, that we don't have textbooks to buy again, which will be a great blessing because we spent three-quarters of a million last year on textbooks. So the reading that would be coming up next year, it will not, we will not have to purchase that. We already have purchased that. I think that we're also looking at the possibility of, I, I don't want to go to the council for operation budget, but they were very appreciative of the fact that we have not been to them for several years. So I think if push comes to shove, we can do that. I think probably we will grow several students. I think there's an indication that we may even in a couple of years not need the number of interventionists that we had. So I think there's several things that will help that. I think that we just recently, we are going to be more actively seeking grants, and what we will do with that is, for example, the grant that we got from the Jennings or Rebecca Jones Foundation, we will look at what we can replace, if anything, in the general purpose budget for staff development. We're not, we're not seeing a decrease in the title funds, which has been pretty surprising, and, and we really thought that we would, so we'll have to watch that. But I think that one of the things we were concerned about is whether we would have to replace some of the title funding with GP. We, we don't think we're going to have to do that next year. So I think really it's going to be a case of looking at where can we get money from the savings that we would have in textbooks, from the savings we would have in professional development, and seeing where we go from there.
I'm sure you're keeping Mr. Lyons in the loop.
Yes.
And so if they see this money set aside, that they understand that it's earmarked for state law technology.
Right. We, we had a good conversation with, with him, and, and they are understanding that we are looking at purchasing technology as soon as we hear whatever it is we will hear from the state as far as what we can use for the, the park tests. And so I think that they will be looking at us for expenditures in that, in that line. If we can do that on our own, then certainly we will do that. I appreciate very much the comment that I heard from at least one council member that said, "We, we know when you come to us and you're asking for money that you really need it." And I think that, that that's true. They are aware that we have taken a lot of the capital improvements on our own shoulders, and I think they have been very gracious. And I haven't heard a single complaint or concern about their understanding that we do need a new school and we do need the Bradley elevator. So I'm very appreciative to council of their relationship with us, and their knowing that when we come to them, we really do, do need to come to them for the money.
The council's been very gracious to us, and we have a great representative, liaison, so.
Mr. Campbell?
You mentioned the elevator at Bradley. Is that not a go right now?
Yes, yes. It's in the, it's in the capital. It should be in their capital improvement plan.
Okay.
That, along with the Hobgood addition and the new school.
Okay.
Yes, we've heard nothing to indicate otherwise. As I said, they, they were very gracious to us when we did our presentation, and I shared our appreciation to them for, for the relationship we have. I think the relationship that we have with our governmental partners, the Parks and Rec, Housing Authority, police, I think is probably as good as I've ever seen it. And I, I know that when, when I call them, they're there, and I really appreciate that very much.
I just want to compliment Linda and Gary for representing us at the budget meeting very, you know, really well, you know, sitting through that.
It was a, it was a process, but thank you for being there and representing us.
Well, I appreciate the board's support very much.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Anderson or Dr. Gilbert? Well, other business?
Ms. Wade, I do have a couple of things.
Sure.
I was asked to, to discuss the, the whole process of the state law changing, which has to do with TCAP, third through eighth grade achievement, the TCAP testing being included in the final grade. So I'm going to try to explain that, which should be quite a feat. But, but the state law did change, and it does read that both TCAP three through eight achievement and TCAP in-course assessment scores will be factored into students' second semester final grade. So that becomes important. For achievement, the score will account from fifteen to twenty-five percent of the grade is determined by the local board of education, and I'm very grateful to our board for including fifteen percent. So what that will look like, we recently got quick scores that are still embargoed, so we really can't talk about that, but it does provide our schools with the ability to share those scores with parents and of their individual children, and for us to go ahead and factor those grades in. So what that will look like is this. When you think about science, social studies, math, and reading, those are the four content areas, and we in our school district are divided up by nine weeks. So the final grade in reading then, we will have twenty-five percent will come from that first nine weeks. Twenty-five percent will come from the second nine weeks. And then remember that the law says that the TCAP impacts the second semester. So for the third nine weeks then, the, the grade that the child will get from the teacher for that nine weeks will count for seventeen point five percent. For the fourth nine weeks, it will count for seventeen point five, and that will allow, allow the rest of that hundred percent to come from the fifteen percent TCAP. The way that will work is Mickey and Trent, it, it works, I know, I'm sorry. This is, there's logic to this. And thankfully, the good part is that Mickey and Trent, who are technology folks, have figured out a template. And so what our teachers and principals will be doing is plugging in that quick score, and that will automatically generate what that final grade will, will do. So that, that is a real blessing. But I feel comfortable with what the board decided as far as the fifteen percent. Frankly, I would have liked no percent, but that's not my call, that's the state's call. And so I, I feel comfortable that we are ready and that we are moving forward in every school, and we are abiding by the law, and the students will receive their grades. The second thing I would like to say, and then if you have questions, then I may or may not be able to answer about that. But the second thing I would like to say is we had a principal who is retiring, and we just recently celebrated that retirement, and that's Ms. Barbara Sales. And I want to thank her for her years of service for Hobgood. I realize that we recognized her the other day. But also I'd like to thank Michelle McVicker. She will be taking a principalship in Nashville, and she has quite a challenge on her hands because it, it is a turnaround school that she will be working with there. And I want to congratulate Dr. Tammy Gressard, who will be the new principal at Hobgood. She has a background at Hobgood, and today received a standing ovation from the faculty when we announced that she would be the, the principal. So I'm very confident in, in the future of Hobgood with, with Dr. Gressard at the helm. Thank you.
There were some questions? Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Phillips?
I can't see her, but I think Dr. Gressard is here, so I know you're going to do, is she here? I see the top of the head. I can only see the tops of heads, so sorry. That was, I'm very excited. She'll do a beautiful job with Hobgood, and she, she will just do a great job. I'm really excited about that. My question was back to the quick score.
Sure.
So when the parents get the children, receive the children's grades, it will be just like reading ninety percent. It will not be broken down into the different parts, is that right?
You will have, and I, and I'll share this with you, but what you will have is there will be a sticker that's going to go on each report card, and it will have reading, math, social studies, and science, and then it will have first, second, third, fourth, then it will have TCAP, and then it will have final, that will be after that. So they will see what the TCAP score will be as far as, there is a numeric grade, but then that has been translated by the state into whether that is below basic, basic proficient or advanced. And the numeric grade is what will be used to figure in with, with the other grades to get that final grade.
Thank you. My question was how it was going to look because these children have already received their third nine weeks' grades, and how are these quick scores coming in going to impact that? Are we, we're not going to be changing their grade from that they saw originally, but the, the quick scores are going to impact that.
Right. It will have to do with the percentage, the weight of, the weight of each of those.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Campbell?
We, we've talked about these, what percentage was going to count as grades, and I, I will say this again, I think one of the biggest fallacies in that process is for the young student who is in the sixth grade but is in resource and working on a third grade level. And when that child goes to take those TCAP tests, they're taking them on the sixth grade level. And I think that's really unfair, but that's, we don't have any control over that, but it is a, it's a major concern, particularly to those parents who have children in those situations. And that's not only in most varsity schools, but I think that's everywhere as well.
Are there any more comments or any other business? Mrs. Ridley, if you would, get some dates together for the board concerning the retreat. It did come up during the meeting that we wanted to work on our vision for the board, and we'll see when everybody- and we'll see when everybody is available for the retreat coming up in the fall. Yes, ma'am. Fall of the year. And by that time, maybe all of us will have in mind what we'd like to see as part of the new vision. If there is nothing else, certainly we extend congratulations both to Mrs. Sales for the wonderful job she has done at Hobgood and the wonderful staff that I know hated to see her go, and the retirement festivities were beautiful, tearful, but beautiful. And certainly, Dr. Grisard will be a wonderful addition to Hobgood. She's familiar with them, and I think she'll work well. If nothing else, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is there a second?
A second.